Mr. Calhoun. I call this meeting the word 601, what's up? Yeah, 601, the Bussaras City Council Joint Regular Committee meetings for Thursday, November 8th. Members present are Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Truca, Monica Sack, Doug Boeck, and Andrew Shoff. First, Chairman, would you like to say a word?
Yes, would everybody please stand for a moment? A moment of silence for Dr. Tom Keiner, who passed away this past week. Tom was the Service Safety Director under Mike Jacobs and was also our Health Commissioner for the City of Bussaras for many, many years. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll begin with everyone first?
Yeah, because they're just coming in. This one will take me right away.
That's all right. So, we'll, yes. Public participation other than the...
Those are the branch thirty, no, yeah.
Any other? Okay, okay, no way. So, we'll start the Public Lands and Buildings Committee at 6:03. Members, all members are present. Just want to talk about ambulance building repairs first.
Thanks.
Yep.
We have the one part of the ambulance building downstairs that we've continued to patch, and we tried patching it during the summer and thought we had it fixed. And last Thursday, of course, we put on new ceiling tile and it bonded because of the heavy rain and room through ceiling. So, I just want to make you aware, I am reaching out to get quotes just to do the flat part. I do have one quote already from a local roper. I have another guy coming tomorrow. We're probably looking somewhere between a 20-year warranty and 18 to 20-year and between 15,000 to 25,000 and 26,000. It all depends which way we go. We do have money in lands and buildings and contractual services that we have some money left, but I think combination of those three or four line items there, we probably have enough money to get it done. It all depends if we do a rubber roof, if it stays warm because it gets too cold, the rubber roof, they can't use the glue. So, we're looking at an alternative. I've got a couple of other people coming. So, I just wanted to make you aware of it, that if we can get it fixed, we need to get it fixed for Kevin. Can you enlighten a little bit about the passing the...
Yeah, they have inspection. Anytime a new company takes residence in a station, they have to be inspected and passed by both the Ohio Medical Transportation Board and the State Board of Pharmacy. And the State Board of Pharmacy, they happened to be there when it was pouring.
I saw it, it bonded, found a new way.
Yeah, she basically said, "I'll be back between two weeks and two years. Please have this fixed."
So, I'm reaching out just to get a couple and just making you aware that if we can get a good quote and good warranty for 18 to 20 years, I'll give it Joyce and we'll gradually have lose some money around in the contractual service part to pay for it after this year. I just wanted to make you aware of it. Didn't know if we were going to have to appropriate money or not, but it looks like we might be able to. If we have to do that, then I'll come back to you. But right now, I think we can squeeze it out of there.
Sounds good. Any other questions on that? Okay, those are right on. Pines Recipro, what do we know about this? This, this something you're doing, Bruce?
Yeah. I didn't mean it to sound like that. So, I was thinking around. Well, I had six thirty on my calendar. Then Barry said he had six thirty, and I said, "That's what I sent him." And I'll blame it on Ryan, where he sent me six thirty.
That's right.
We're, and to get all serious, since we're glad to be here and talk to you about this. Jeff McMullin, I think most of you has met him. He's been with us about a year. He's been involved in this. And then Derek Franz, and Barry has met some of you, I think. Barry, what's the name of your company?
The Earth Squad Environmental.
Barry has, he's a V E and he's got all kinds of other environmental stuff behind his name that I don't have. But very experienced in this kind of thing. And we're working hand in hand with him on it. I know you have a long agenda tonight, and formally, this is the first time we're presenting this information to you. It's very involved, and I suspect we'll be back to committee meetings as we work our way through this. There's a map in your packet, it's a map, that shows where the reservoirs and reservoirs are. Everybody have that?
Yes.
And I know some folks in the city, I may get fine, and if that's a name, ODNR assigns numbers, in an engineer, I'm assigning numbers in my mind, but that gives you an idea of where they are. Reservoirs one and two are out of service for water supply. And that was for Ohio EPA. And the best we can tell, that's a bit over 20 years ago. And John said they're out of service down in Darnsburger when he joined the city. That was 20 years ago. So, that's how we got that record. We do know from ODNR, that those two reservoirs, I was pretty amazed at this, and Barry wants two, where the first one was constructed in 1900 and the second 1919. So, those things are over 100 years old. They have well exceeded their useful life. And I know you're thinking, "How can a lump of dirt and concrete exceed its useful life?" But the subsoil gets saturated, concrete cracks, and seeps its useful life. Reservoirs three and four are used for water supply, and you have to continue with your ongoing maintenance. John has really jumped in on things that he's done at it. John Darnsburger. And he's taken, from Barry, my comment on that, they've been out there together a lot. Interestingly, and it kind of shows up on the map, reservoirs three and four overflow into reservoir one, which makes it kind of exciting from the engineering point of view as to how to solve this. Sorry, I did get excited about this kind of thing. And reservoir two condition is the most critical. There are photos attached that show reservoir two, and there's also a fact sheet. If you look at on the second page, about each of the reservoirs. It talks about their age and their volume and their size. And yes, your newest biggest reservoir does own 105 billion or 150 gallons of water. I'm like, "Wow, that's a lot of water." You know, I mean, you just think about it. So, that's a, that's a big flood. I don't like Barry talking about reservoir number two, which you have received the 2018 inspection report on it. You have not received the other three. We'll circle back to that.
Based on the 2018 inspection report that ODNR did. Now, ODNR inspects dams throughout the state on a five-year schedule. So, the dams for Bussaras have been inspected literally since the early 80s. Now, reservoir number two is 100 years old. It literally has exceeded its useful life. Most earthen dams are designed only for a 50 to maybe an 80-year lifespan. So, we have done very, very well with our, with our reservoir. Currently, the dam's hydraulics and its ability to store water and then safely pass it will not pass the new required standards for what we call a probable maximum flood. Probable maximum flood does not relate real well to, like, you know, you've heard 25-year storm events or 100-year storm events. This is something different. But it will not pass the current regulations. Also, the embankment itself, as Bruce has indicated, over time, the subsoil's saturated. During the walks that we've done out there, as well as in the photographs, they identify areas where the embankment itself is starting to move, basically bulge. We have areas of depression on it. We actually have springs forming through the embankment. Not good. Also, the spillway itself, I mean, if you take a look at the pictures, yeah, it's 100-year-old concrete. It's really good concrete. Unfortunately, 100 years of being run over by water, freezing water and the like, it's started to take its toll. It's starting to spall, chip, and fall apart. To give you an idea how old it is, how many of you have ever seen square rebar? That's how old the concrete is out there, when you square rebar it. Also, because the spillway is starting to deteriorate, we are having issues with erosion, soil erosion at the base of the spillway. So, we now have a fairly large hole, which is not good, because that hole will slowly undermine the spillway, basically causing even further problems with the spillway and with the embankment. Now, looking at what ODNR has identified in their 2018 inspection, we've identified basically two, what I'm going to call engineering alternatives. One is full compliance with ODNR regulations. That's going to require multiple engineering studies, it's going to require additional design, and it's going to require construction. Not counting the construction costs, you're looking at between 400 and 450,000. Now, if we start adding in the construction cost, conceivably could get, approach a million. The second option is to look at breaching the reservoir. Now, the way that we have considered breaching it is not the traditional way. The traditional way is that you go in and you literally cut the channel in the embankment. No. These dams were built when they required lake drains. So, we have an operational lake drain. So, our plan is to use that lake drain and drain the reservoir slowly. In other words, taking about anywhere from 30 to 60 days to drain the reservoir. Then at that point, we can remove the embankment and the spillway. Now, there are other non-engineering options, but those will require some serious looking into via your law director. And I'm not qualified to talk about those. So, at this point, I'm going to let Jeff talk about some of the funding options that we've looked into.
Okay. This morning, I had the pleasure of meeting Ohio EPA, some economics, and talked about various projects that we're currently working on, but I asked about possible funding options for the reservoirs. And they indicated four possible agencies where we could go and get some 0% interest loans, low-interest loans. There are what they call forgiveness-type grants, where there is a loan, a sponsoring loan, and the interest from another loan pays that, and there's a forgiveness of that balance. Basically, it's ultimately a grant. There's also a FEMA grant. The downside of the FEMA grant is it could take two years to get the funding from FEMA. It is a grant, does not need to be, you know, it's an official grant. There are also Ohio Emergency Management Agency grants or loans, similar situation as EPA with the loan forgiveness, 0% kind of thing, where interest from one other loan pays this loan, similar situation. And then there are other ODNR options as well for loans. But all of these, I got the information, they sent me links to different websites and documents that they have to discuss these, these different types of loans that they offer, and I have not had a chance to dig into all of them yet. And I'm also waiting on some information from the Water Resource portion of EPA that is part of their program, that's a program where there's Water Resource Restoration sponsors that help with funding and whatnot through the EPA. So, I'm digging into all that right now, but there is options out there to help with funding to cover the cost of these, these reservoirs.
The program is, the funding is very similar to what we, what you have at the water plant. For instance, your panel of interest loan on a CSO project, which is about $4 million, that's a zero interest loan. That's pretty good. I think that's over 25,000 per year. We have had some water projects down in southwest Ohio, in Cleveland, that got grant, they got grants, I mean, they got loans, but then they got loan forgiveness. I notice we typed on the hand, not grant forgiveness. But they have grants, then they have loan forgiveness. You think it was a grant, that's what they call it. And then zero interest loans, and then low interest loans. So, there's those four avenues that the EPA, we've successfully, we have been able to get that for water line project, and for your CSO project. And we would pursue this aggressively. I suspect they've worked a lot the same, and you know, St. Huxtable, you know, and water plant, they're all due to Barry and Joyce. So, that's the choices on the funding that we could pursue. We can open a floor of questions, might be best thing to do.
So, if we, obviously one's a lot cheaper than the other, what would, what would it be once you were done with options, say, the breach, where you drain it slowly for 30 to 60 days, and then what?
Then you would have to go through a site restoration and restore the original creek through that area, so that it's not banded up and it'll be flowing freely.
Okay, so that dam would, all that would have to come out? And that's part of all those price?
Yes. One of the other things on here as part of the funding option, the city pays a fee for these dams. And I'm not sure what that fee is, but with the dam is breached, then that fee goes away.
It's an annual inspection fee.
And if, if you were to bring it into compliance, there are certain discounts that you can get as well. Like, for the emergency action plan, you can get a 15% discount on whatever those fees are. And if you do, once you get the operation and maintenance inspection manual put together, it's an additional 10%. So, you can get additional 25% discount off of whatever those fees are, but you have to do, you have to do the two. You can't just do ones to get the other. You have to do both the emergency action plan and the operation and maintenance manual.
We won't be able to see where that annual fee is. It may have a amount, all that much money, but it's a big picture. But it's, I didn't think, put it out there as an incentive for you all to continue to do that. An emergency action plan, and the other, I think you mentioned, they're required anyway, but what you get them completed and approved, most of that's when you get the discount, and it's per dam, not all per dams. So, yeah, it's a little bit of savings.
Can we sell the property, though?
Well, Barry, why don't you answer that?
It's entirely possible to do so, although there are issues of liability hanging around that your law director will get to have the joy of jumping into. But it is possible. The, I mean, some of the things that you may want to consider if you do that is requiring the new owner to make certain that he brings the dam into compliance, that he has appropriate insurance. Because even though he owns it, if the dam fails, it's the citizens of Bussaras that pay the price.
We're not taking the dam out, then? We're leaving that all there?
That's correct.
But you're saying if we sold it...
If you sold it...
And it fails, it's our problem?
That, I can't answer. That's a very deep legal issue.
And apparently, the ORC and ODNR have, it's a buck down the requirements of a normal private and private city. That's, that's we can tell, that's something Rob's just going to have to take a look at and talk to the people at ODNR, or, yeah, ODNR.
On, pardon me, I...
Go ahead.
On the breach, you said up to 300,000. Now, that reclaim the land that was underwater?
Yes.
Also, as in restoring vegetation and however it can be reclaimed?
Right, well, within the guidelines, there is, you know, seeding, emulsing, and that kind of thing, as far as the vegetation, you know, planting trees and all that, obviously probably something different.
But I just mean basic vegetation. I mean, and I'm not saying trees and all that, that would be additional.
But basically, it'd be a very sophisticated soil erosion control project, because all we have to do is stabilize the soil. We don't want that moving back into the creek and then flowing into the river. So, all we would have to do is stabilize it and then just let Mother Nature do the rest.
Where does that creek go now? I mean, where did it go?
It goes under, it goes under section.
Yeah, I know, now it did, it does. But originally, I mean, we evidently couldn't have been a bed of some kind.
Yeah, typically, it just winds right through the bottom of the, of the old, you know, it'll wind right through the bottom of the pond area, you know, of the reservoir or water and set it damp.
Yeah. So, we have to open up that whole ditch all the way to the river?
Yes. That's where you reditch, re-channel the creek, pump that through there.
I have a question. When you would do this breach, then you're estimating how many gallons of flow, what's like the water level going to raise in the river? I mean, because, you know, a few years ago, maybe Sis remembers, we had a line break at the Riley Reservoir, and that pipe was, what, 20-inch diameter maybe?
It was, yeah, I was...
And it raised the water level, and it, matter of fact, it really flooded everybody surrounding, you know? I mean, it, it filled the flood plain.
One of the, when you breach a dam, one of the things that has to be done, and in our case, we actually have a two-point issue, is we will work with ODNR, which is required to determine the flow rate into the river, so that we do not impact the river. But we also have to deal with Ohio EPA, because the Sandusky River is considered waters of the US. So, it has very specific water quality standards. So, even though ODNR says you may be able to discharge X into the river, Ohio EPA may come in and say, "Oh, maybe only half of that." So, we have to work with them both in order to get what the actual discharge rate is. We are assuming that a 10, the equivalent discharge into the river from a 10 to a 25-year rainfall event would be satisfactory to them.
And Bruce, you, you have to do what's called an inundation map, and that shows what happens, like, the dam, like what you just said, if a dam would fail or that a certain part of it would fail, how much flooding is your downstream, how quickly. So, that map is required regardless for different year storms and floods. And what I alluded to before, what makes it tricky is four and three are protected by one, and it just gets real, and it gets real complicated. You have to look at downstream bridges and culverts, with how much water will pass under those, all that kind of heavy detail. You know, worst case is they all three end up at one, and what happens downstream? And that's the job of ODNR to control that. Do you experience, I didn't go long for a plating bridge.
Yes, and I got, I got flooded. I mean, I lived right there, and it broke in the morning, and by evening, I had water. I mean, it was amazing, it was amazing how quickly the reservoir drunk and the floodplain filled.
The other thing, you breach the dam, the former stream that used to run there, that's now on private property. Home ownership or whatever, I don't know what is done with that property on the other side of the road. Who's going to have to absorb that cost if we have to claim that to, does that revert back to the original? Would we have to purchase the land?
Well, the, during the actual breach is when we have to have the stream clear. Okay? The object there is if, for God's sakes, if something did happen, then, you know, basically the water will have a straight shot down to the river, which, you know, we don't want that to happen, which is why we're using the lake drain so that we can control it. But, once the dam is breached, and the whole area goes back to, let's call it nature, church, whatever the property owner downstream wishes to do, as long as he does not impede the flow, he can do it.
I just make sure we don't have any others.
Yeah, I mean, no matter, no matter what plan, which way we go, Rob will be involved with us because of the liability issues.
I think Rob has something.
I did. I had a question on the, obviously, EPA and ODNR is involved, but because of where that's at, if we do the breach and we do the reclamation through there, it's an area, it's the head of water, it's there for the Sandusky, so there's Indian stuff, there's Mastodon stuff. Are we going to have to go get archaeological certifications and deal with all that? I mean, we drained that dam, we don't, we don't know what's underneath there 100 years ago, I don't even care.
That is true, and we don't have the answer for you.
The two, there are two entities that have always come into play whenever we've been dealing with a river. One of them is the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes.
They're, they're real nice people.
Yes.
And are they going to have some involvement in this too, then?
They will have to mow them through ODNR.
Through ODNR?
Yes.
And then how about the Sandusky watershed people?
Again, through ODNR.
Okay. So, the, I mean, that, I just want to make sure, because those are ones that means that always pop up to us whenever we talk river. Bruce has another one.
Yeah, so, I know that one of the problems we have through the city is the Sandusky River. And there's quite a few choke points that are in our Sandusky River. And is any of this funding that would be available to at least help alleviate log jams? I know we have quite a few log jams, mainly when it gets down close to Gate Street and there. I was recently contacted by the neighbors.
That's something I have to investigate. I know that what I discussed with them was dealing with just the reservoirs. You know, downstream, we're going to have to analyze everything downstream as well, and whether or not things can pass, and who's going to be affected. I know we have an additional water source downstream that will be affected as well. So, we're going to have to look at all that, and then whatever funding will be available, again, I'll have to look into what's out there, if these grants or loans can handle that as well.
I could say something?
Yeah.
Bruce, you gave me an idea, and that is, could you convert the reservoir into a retention pond? If a pump's relieving the downstream flooding through the city, and a retention pond would be dry, except we got to have a fair ground. So, it'd be low level. So it'd be low level, you know, I don't know when O D N R kicks in, but it's, it's pretty high embankment, relatively speaking. You know, and that's something to look at. We can, if you maintain the property, go to retention, help stop some of that type of flooding. We have to look at which drainage areas compared to the flooding downtown, but I think our cadres has modeled that. They matter, and getting together with them and finding what year stormy can hold back.
Go ahead.
Just wait, if anybody else has a question. Do you know how many acres that drains? How much the reservoir two, which is prime?
The reservoir two was two and a half square miles, I believe.
That's a lot of land.
Like sixteen hundred acres, I think, if you look for it. Let's see. Reservoir number two is two point five square mile, sixteen hundred acres.
That's a lot of water.
Well, that, that dam holds back, what was it?
But I'm just saying, if we open it to a stream again, that's a lot of water coming all at once, like a retention pond, like Bruce.
Should be no more than it's coming over there now.
Yeah, now, it, it still comes through, and it's full, that amount of water comes through.
I'm just.
Yeah, but doesn't.
Change it to a straight stream without any barrier.
And when you start to look at the area of those reservoirs together and how much water they hold back, it's pretty impressive, I mean, it's for, for a city this size.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. Where does, the picture's here, you show it going over the spillway here. Where does that water go now?
That water flows through overflow stream and into the Sandusky.
And into the Sandusky?
Yes.
Where? By the pump house? Does it go by the pump house?
No, no, it's just the one down by Kees Road that you were.
Yeah, so, yeah.
It goes down by Kees Road?
Yeah.
Okay. Right, it's right after, it's the east of Kees Road, yeah.
It's a legal question, which may not be able to be answered now, but I wanna get it out there. We talked about the possibility that if we were to not do anything yet, we could have liability should an event occur. If we go through and, and do the breach, once everything's complete, does that, and we were to sell it at that point, are we mitigating from, from any liability at that point if, you know, excessive rainfall or anything? As long as we follow O D N R, Army Corps of Engineers, whoever's leading the, the charge there, if we follow their, their plan, are we gonna be then off the hook at that point?
Yeah, I believe, if you breach, if you breach the dam, then the problems go away. Basically.
Well, at least the liability associated with the dam failure is gone. Thinking about that, that may also affect your liability insurance with the city as well, because you do have to insure the four reservoirs.
And my other question to follow up to that, and maybe nobody has an answer to this yet, if we do the breach, value of the land today versus value of the land after it's breached and reclaimed? Go up, go down, stay the same?
It depends on what you find on using the land for. If you're just gonna leave it, you know, as a natural reserve of some sort, it's got a certain value, but if it's sold for residential development, I'm certain that the land value would be much higher.
Thank you. I have a question then.
Yeah.
You talk about the soil saturation and everything, even after the breach and reclaim, how long would it be before it would be usable or I'm beginning to go on?
Probably would be looking at, obviously, about two to three years for the, for the settlements to fully be watered.
I guess you got another question?
But that would be considered a flood plain, so you can't build there a permanent structure as an housing?
It would depend how you did the final grading.
Yes.
But that would have to be determined by the O D N R, whether that's a flood plain or.
Yes, that is correct.
So that, that can also determine the value of it.
Yes.
In the.
Go ahead, Ian.
In the compliance alternative, you mentioned that there's four hundred to four hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of costs, and that was engineering costs, then what other costs involved in that?
The, one of the things that O D N R did in two thousand two, they did a very simple flood routing study, which does not meet their requirements, but it's, it's a quick and dirty way for them to get a handle on things. And they identified that the current dam is incapable of handling their required flood level for what we call a class two hazard dam. Now, if you're a class one dam, you have to pass what we call a probable maximum flood, and that's what it is, it's the maximum flood. But if you're a class two, you only have to pass fifty percent of that. Study that they completed says it can only pass fifteen percent. So no matter what we do, if we go into compliance, we will have to raise the dam.
And then you mentioned not counting construction costs, I presume, presumably on a new dam?
It would be, it would be close to a new dam by the time you get done with all the compliance with, that would have to be done.
Okay. Could, could the dam be built in a different location, and then the old dam blocked with ground to just build around it and relocate the dam?
That is an alternative, you would like that.
Right, I mean, I'm looking at other options. Because, I mean, we're putting a lot of money into trying to salvage a hundred year old dam that's.
Yes.
Gonna be torn out, why not build new elsewhere and just block off the old dam?
I may have grasped, Bruce, you don't need that, that reservoir does not add your water supply. Right. It's at a service as far as public water supply. So you have to make sure it's a retail, maybe, maybe.
I don't know what the cost of the dam is gonna be.
The other thing to consider with what you're saying is, the breach, the dam is, is, and rebuild it's in another location. So we'll have, will we not have twice the cost? We'll have the breaching costs.
Well, if you, if you fill, if you fill it, I'm just, I'm not an engineer, you know, so I'm suggesting, if you built the new dam before you took out the old dam, and then after the old, after the new one's complete, route dirt around and just reroute the outer edge of the, of the reservoir itself, so that you don't even have the old dam in service in any capacity, you no longer need it, and you have, you have a new dam.
We did, I get to it, Ian, I think it's.
We did, I did a similar project. All we did was we leapfrogged further upstream to put the new dam in.
Right.
And then once we had the new dam in with the correct spillway, which did have to go through the old dam, and we just basically took the old dam and then just bulldozed it down.
Right.
So it's possible to do something like that, but it is.
The construction of a new dam?
Construction, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yeah, as far as liability, I, you know, we're starting to make major investments in our park system. And our park system is where the whole water filtration plant is, for our soccer fields and the buildings that are down there. And then we're down farther down the stream, you know, we got that business area on Sandusky Street. And we had All Norer that was basically built in a flood plain. Liability wise, it's, it's almost like we need to do something sooner than later when it comes to draining that reservoir, correct?
I would say.
That is correct, and even from a liability issue with the regulatory agency, if you have O D N R, they're looking for action, you know, decisions and movement, so yes.
And then there's housing and stuff that's in the low lying areas there, just before All Norer Part Two, and, you know, it would take a whole lot to wipe all the homes out.
That's where the innovation factor, work at those kind of things.
I think we can wrap up our conversation unless anyone else has any immediate questions. This is our first conversation of many conversations that are going to be taking place, and this is just the first, here's what, where, what it is and what we're looking at, and we need a lot more detailing on this.
I think, and cut ahead.
One last question. If inaction by, on our part, was that gonna lead to fines, and so how soon do we have, what's our timeline here that we have to start doing something?
Little bird at O D N R indicated that without action, we could expect an administrative order in the spring.
Yeah, I think we've found that, at least since the last time.
Yeah, they've put, there's a much stronger language in twenty eighteen, but, yes.
This kind of followed the EPA mandate that when we started the separating program, they started with all the bigger cities and bigger dams with the O D N R, and now they're giving the cities our size with dams. So as long as we put a plan of action together and they know we're working on it, to keep them updated, I think we can keep them that way.
John has been, go ahead, Eric.
John has done a wonderful job so far in working with O D N R, particularly on reservoirs three and four. Letting them know, you know, the work that he's done in terms of vegetation removal, he's repaired a couple of low spots on what we call the crest, which is the flat spot on the top of the embankment. He was very successful on reservoir number three, there is a, something that engineers would call freeboard. And that's the difference between the top of the embankment and what the normal dam water level is. O D N R requires five feet, we only have four feet. John put together the letter explaining and requesting the variance, it granted the variance. So O D N R is pleased with what we're doing on three and four, they're just not happy with us on one of the two.
Two things. Reservoir one, we know two is the prime.
Yes.
One is called what?
Nav.
Nav, okay, and then Riley's number three, and Offley's number four, right? Because Mark's remains, Bill, he doesn't know these things, and I couldn't remember nav. And can we have all three of your names and where you're from?
I'm Jeff McCallum, M C M U L L E N, I'm Brian Steiner, Colonel.
You should have a word with you.
I heard, Frank's there.
The, yeah, the, he's the owner. And was it Gary?
Yeah, Barry Frames, F R A N C. A diversified environmental consultant.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so we're gonna, any other questions to think about, and we'll talk about it next time, and this is at seven forty-five P M.
Well, that's not my call, you're putting it on.
I know we had twenty minutes, I'm sorry, I wanted a little longer.
I will call economic development at six forty-five P M. We have a proposed housing study, I wasn't able to reach out to Mr. Frank House and get some more questions answered that we had asked the last time.
Thank you.
As far as the share of the cost, the share of the cost would not change even if we were to have other municipalities join in. Basically, the cost would increase if they joined in, and they would have to pay their portion. As far as reaching out to other municipalities, Gary has talked to John Rostatch over at Crestline. John is going to talk to the new interim mayor, Joy Miley, and see if they have any funding available to do something like this. He's supposed to get back to Gary, let Gary know if they would be on board and if they would like to take part in this. As far as checking with all of the entire county, basically, the, the idea behind the study from Danner is to have your, your biggest population areas have the study, because they're gonna be the ones that are gonna have the more housing and different style housing, not just residential single family homes. So with Galian and Bucyrus being on board, if Crestline would like to, that would be wonderful. But with Galian and Bucyrus being on board, those two areas are gonna represent a very large part of the population of the entire Crawford County. So that's why they chose those areas and highlighted those. I really don't have any other information unless anybody has maybe another question that I haven't answered, but our share, the ten thousand, would stay the same regardless of if anybody else was willing to go along with this. You look up.
Yeah, I said they were only offering five?
Yes. So that's where basically it's up to Gary to try and come up with the other five, so.
Mr. Chairman? My understanding from what I read in the paper was, I thought that Gary, they were providing part of the funding for this.
They are putting up, the total cost right now for just Galian and Bucyrus, which is what it is currently proposed at, is forty thousand. The partnership is willing to put up twenty thousand dollars of that funding. And then basically, if Galian, or if Galian puts up five thousand, it's gonna be on them to come up with the other five thousand one way or another. It's not like, you know, he, he said he would help them if they, you know, to try and assist in that matter, but it's still gonna be on them to come up with that money, whether they get it through donations or they pull it out of their general fund. Same with us, our ten thousand is gonna stay the same, whether we put five thousand in out of the general fund and come up with five thousand somewhere else, at the end of the day, our share will be ten thousand. And then as far as Crestline, he didn't have a figure or a number for what their share would be if they were to join on, but they would be responsible for their share as well. And he would basically, whatever the cost occurred to include Crestline in, basically whatever that cost was, he would split it and distribute them as he did with the city of Bucyrus and city of.
How soon does he need to have this?
Um, he'd like to get a decision as soon as possible, ultimately, to get this thing going. The answer's ready to, you know, get the study going and contact and make all the, get all the figures together for us. So, you know, they'd like to get this going as soon as possible.
Joyce, do we have ten thousand?
Oh, yeah, we just keep pulling money out of the air.
We'll actually discuss the money up in my hands, Gary.
I, but I'm just curious.
I really prefer not to pull another ten thousand out of this here, but. But we'll have to hunt, I'll put it that way.
What kind of time period is he looking at, maybe he said that, I'm sorry if I didn't catch you.
Uh, he didn't give me an exact date, but they're just, they're, Frank had just done it as soon as possible.
Then I, I would think that we would, you sit down and talk about budgets, if we were to do that. And if gangs only be five, I don't know why we would be more than that, it's just my opinion. But I think we should look down and really look at the budget while we get it worked.
Well, and, and I, I know what you're saying about Galian, but I also think with the, with the, with the partnership putting in their portion, that we're gonna be able to ten thousand dollars. I don't go out shopping for housing studies, but I'm pretty sure that's probably a bargain, and I think as Bucyrus is being the, the county seat, we should take the lead on that, so.
Would any of our businesses be interested? Any of our businesses be interested in contributing to a housing study for their employees that they may want to do?
There's no, there's been no financial money from any businesses. Abida has expressed interest in the study, but they have not, anyone has. And that, that, that would be down the road in time, but they have expressed interest, but no money, no financial law.
I'm just, personally, I'm just tickled that this is something that the economic about, this is, these are the things that I think they should, should be given. You know, and some of the things that run in cemetery walks, okay, but that's just my personal.
No, I, I.
So, yeah, I'm a more.
I agree with you too, you know, taking the lead on this, even if Galian decides that they're not gonna do it at all, and it would end up just being the city of Bucyrus, I mean, I think we're at a time where. I mean, I think we're at a time where especially with all the houses that we've torn down and open property that we have available, you know, there's great ability to build some housing subdivisions in this town right now with some of the property that's up for sale in a few different areas. And, you know, maybe this is what gets one of the developers a hold trigger and build that housing development.
Oh, I don't know, we, we're just.
Do we need to make a?
Yeah.
Make a motion to take it to vote up for the full council for those?
You need to make a motion that your representative to finance committee and that you would like to go ahead with the project and then we'll pick it once we get up to the money discussion. And I mean, eventually it will all come up.
It'll all come up too. It's all about the money, yes, other than the money part.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I'd like to make a motion to move ahead with this. I'll say. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm motioning for this.
I'll end economic development then at six fifty-two P.M.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Six fifty-two, service will come to order. First item of says water line expansion.
Yes, we have been approached about an individual or a company that would like to put a truck, car wash in at the corner about where timers used to be on Route Four. Which as you can see on the second page, we're already to checkmate. It's about twenty-six hundred feet. We already have money appropriated for water line expansion to Mr. Lynn McKeever. But since we didn't go out nineteen and those people decided that they would not be interested, we still have money with Lynn that we could continue on that path. Instead of using the money there, I wanted to bring it to your attention that it would be a truck car wash open to the public. And there isn't one anything closer than Beaver Dam, is what I've been told. And at this point, I would like to move forward to have Lynn continue to work on this to move forward. I, we have mailed out letters to the nine people that live between checkmate and Mannheim Road. I have received two or three back that they're not interested at this time, but I haven't got them all back yet. But I would think a truck car wash would use quite a bit of water when you're washing a truck or a semi. And right now, they're sending trucks all the way to Beaver Dam. So it is a different facility than what they have now.
I'm asking Bruce right now.
Go ahead.
I can actually vouch for that. All the years that I spent working up at Morgan Keystone, you actually have a trucking company that sits right over on Old Route Thirty in between Crestline and Mansfield. It's called Golden Hawk Trucking. And those guys either have to go clear to Beaver Dam or they have to go to VA pretty much. And they, the guy that owns Golden Hawk, his name's Ray, he likes to have his trucks washed at least once a month. At least once a month. And they got to, I believe, right now, last, when I worked at Morgan nine years ago, he had two hundred and eighty trucks on the road, so.
Yes.
How big a line are we talking about running up there?
Uh, it would, it would probably be a six or eight inch, just because when we go down Route Four, we will tee it off to go down Andrews to eventually create a loop back to the plant someday, some year. But we would tee it off because I think there's like twenty-three homes on Andrews. So it's just one more little segment that we can gain a few customers. And we're kind of looking at doing it the same way we're doing out thirty-five. We provide all the material and all we're paying for is the equipment and the labor. And the contractor can get in and out in probably a couple of weeks.
Is this the east or west side of the road?
As far as I understand, it's the west side, but he hasn't done any work because I wouldn't let him until I got your okay to use that money that's already appropriated to Lynn to do that instead of Route Nineteen.
Would that, also with that eight-inch line, that would be fire hydrant type of thing?
Well, we're not required for that, but I think depending on what our future, where we want to go, we want to make sure we have a line big enough to loop it eventually. So it might be a flushing hydrant, but it won't be a fire hydrant because it's not required.
We could put a fire hydrant.
You could put a flushing hydrant in or you could make the line bigger, but then you're driving your cost up. It's not a requirement outside the city.
I'd like to see if you do do that, I like this, because I don't think it's going to cost much, see what the difference in the cost would be.
Okay.
I'd like to see that. But I think we're, we're going to have a lot of trucks out there, I think, for me.
What plus by having, you know, fire hydrants up there?
You have.
We're kind of extending out.
Potential growth, is that what you?
Potential growth and also for the, the township can see that we're.
Well, you get the ISO protection out of it too somewhat in area six. Having a viable water source doesn't make it a big concern.
So where, where are we then with what council needs to do as far as this? Do we just simply?
Don't need to do anything. We already got money on a purchase order for Lynn. He's just not using that money on Nineteen.
On Nineteen?
He'll use it on this. I just wanted to make you guys aware before I told him to move ahead. We already got a purchase order open to him, but he's got money left because we didn't do state property.
But as far as construction of it, of it, we're going to have to, that would be next year?
Uh, yeah, he hasn't done all the plans yet, so.
Okay.
But we have the open purchase order for him to do the drawing. And I'll talk to him about doing the eight inch or the six, whatever he thinks it needs to have that for future.
Okay, at some point then will we need legislation to do any of this or not? Okay.
So they're just looking for permission to switch that money over from Route Nineteen over to this Route Four project for the engineering of it? That's all they're asking for permission to do?
Well, I think the legislation just says, already says to expand outside the city.
You say that much, yeah.
It doesn't specify where.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure you guys are okay with it, that I use it in another one of those.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did that truck company say if they wanted to have sewer too?
No, they did not.
Any objections from the committee?
Nope.
No point.
Great. It's not an objection, but I do like the idea of comparing the two water lines because if it does go down Andrews with those homes there, wouldn't you need, I mean, that would give you the ability to put my.
Supply them.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, I'll get with Lynn and we'll, we'll see what we need to have to offer that and what we'll just price it.
Okay, sounds great. Okay, now, next order of business is says it's an amendment of FAA grant resolution. Three of the charm.
Mr. Mark Ratliff?
Uh, yeah, I don't know. The search agency director's office and administrator, the ministry assistant up there, they were called by FAA and they asked for some changes in the language. And it's, it's noted in here what they, what they specifically wanted. They basically wanted to say that we not only have the authority to apply for the FAA grant, but any matching OVA grant, just in case should there ever be a matching OVA rule. So.
Here, repeat, so we'll have that moved.
I'll make you a motion to request a new legislation. Second.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Either now or later on this, so if you should call me and ask a question. With this being the third, I think, go around with this, and we pay two hundred and fifty dollars each time? Or is this something that's costing us more each time? And so is this something that we've made mistake on or is it something somebody we've hired has made mistake on or?
Doesn't matter, we're paying for it.
I know, I was, I was asked a question, I'd like to, you have an answer?
Yes, it costs us.
Right.
Yeah, two hundred dollars.
As, as to where, where, the FAA has changed it, so I mean, they're the ones that have asked for the, for the new, for the new language.
I know that.
So.
Those are when you're asked a question.
So who wants to give us money?
Not our money, man.
Yeah, right.
Sorry.
Yeah. We've had, asked them a couple different ways.
It's better if they want to do what they want.
All right, I got it.
Anyone else got, anyone else got a question?
Okay, he's got a motion. I have a second.
A second.
Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, motion passes. And I believe I'm going to move on and it's what, seven oh one?
All right, I will call all five orders, seven oh one. And first item is alley vacation and an explanation for this letter. You know, wait a minute.
Jeff?
Enough to be dangerous.
Okay.
The way I understand it, I'm not sure if I'll get it backwards or not, but the owner of the two adjacent properties, she wants to have it vacated. Right, it was her mother's property across the alley and she has now got ownership of that. So they're actually side by side with the alley in between the two properties and she just wants to vacate the alley and make that all her property. I think it's, in a nutshell.
Sure.
Yes.
And by the looks of it, that one lot is only thirty-five feet wide, so currently if you combine those two lots, you're at least making one big lot that's usable.
She actually has a yard.
But I read on the third page here from the utility company, it says they ask not to build anything on top of, there's a gas line right down the alley.
Right.
Set back.
Yeah.
What is this?
Tell us about it.
Uh, Taylor, well, that's the alley behind it. It's kind of out there by, by Taylor.
It's a alley, and it's Taylor?
Yeah.
So there's a, that alley has exits at both ends of it?
Yeah. Because where Taylor kind of makes that curve where Orange Treehouse used to be, I think where that alley.
Well, that's put up there, okay.
Yeah.
That's where that north south alley from down there.
Yeah.
All right, well.
And, and just a, a comment about the.
Yeah, just the, the woman who is requesting that Margaret Kindiger, she's a brother-in-law, her daughter has come in and filled out the paperwork. She has some health issues, which is why she's not going to speak to us tonight.
Hi, Margaret.
The, we went to Landon's office, went through and contacted, so it was a drain, part of distribution streets and all that, and told him to the police and you saw the one feedback there from home gas. If you pursue this or decide to go forward with this, this does not require public hearing. This only requires solicitation. And then after the litigation passes, should that happen, it has to be cleared with the number of offices in the courthouse. But under your's, no public hearing.
Question? Yes, for those of you that have been around longer than I have, when we've done this in the past, you can, I know you say it doesn't require public hearing, have we reached out to any of the public to see how it would affect them, you know?
Well, in this case, we normally would. She would need a letter from all enjoying property owners, but in this case, ours.
She is adjoining property.
But ours would be a property owner.
To understand this, correct? She just wants to turn into a grassy area anyways, correct?
Okay, so I need to entertain a motion.
So, second?
Any other questions, comments? Other lives? All those in favor of vacating this alley at said address of five oh five and five fifteen South Spring Street? Anybody, everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same time, motion passed. All right. Item number two, veterinary offices as a permitted use in the general business district. I do believe this was brought to us by Landon Hill. I'll read this for our news reporters. Proposed addition of veterinary offices as permitted use in the general business district and researching the proposed zoning changes of four East Mansfield Street. I came across inconsistency, I felt needed to address. Veterinary offices are explicitly listed as a conditional use in neighborhood business district. Her Busiris codified ordinance BCO one eleven, eleven seventy-one point O B A. However, there is no explicit use for veterinary offices in the general business district. Her BCO eleven fifty-five point O two B one. Only a use designated as permitted shall be allowed as a matter of right in any zoning district and any use not designated shall be prohibited. As we currently have several veterinary offices in the general business and I feel that, I feel the use is in line with the purpose of the district. I suggest addition of veterinary offices not including outside boarding of animals to BCO eleven seventy-three point O two C as a permitted use in the general business. Proposed change was reviewed, approved and referred to council by planning commission meeting on October fifteenth, twenty eighteen. Sincerely, Landon Hill. Any questions, comments?
Just comment.
Okay.
I think we should all get Landon a little bit of a hand for thinking ahead and just being proactive and catching something like that and going to get out and giving it to the bureau.
You can get some adder, boy.
Yep. That's all.
Would you like to explain the process?
Yeah, this, any zoning amendment requires the public hearing. We need to have draft legislation drafted up first, that takes a few working days. And then schedule a public, can schedule a public hearing right now if we sort this out. At least thirty days, plus maybe a few working days for the public hearing.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion and we request draft legislation to give instead of public hearing. You have to go with probably the time to be the earliest. Eight falls, eight falls on a Saturday.
Wait a minute.
Go ahead.
Remember the public hearing, we're having one for, man's supposed to be, right? And we put the other one off that we were going to have.
Could have gone to the.
If that's going to the planning commission now, I'm not, I mean, if this is an emergency, can we do this one with the one on this end of?
No, we got, ask me thirty days, but, well, you mean the.
It's not about the second one.
Yes.
We don't know what's going to come out of plan for this. They may approve it, they may not approve it, we can do that, but I don't know.
What I'm saying, we're going to have a public hearing like every, every month for the next three months or something. I, that's, that's all I'm saying, so you guys take it from there.
It's, Jim, I'm trying to get this stuff done in importance to a timeframe and we don't want to hold anybody up, especially now since we, there is also a business involved already as far as this is concerned. So we're looking at.
Be like thirteenth of December.
December?
If you give a couple of business days to get this written, yeah. So that's, that's a Thursday. Eric, anybody object to the thirteen? Seven o'clock like the other one? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same time, motion passed. We will set the tentative date for December thirteenth, seven o'clock on a Thursday for a public hearing for the modifying of the codified ordinance to allow veterinary offices in the general business district. With that, at seven oh nine, I, others have anything else? I will recess at seven oh nine. All yours, Mike, for all the way.
I will file a finance committee order at seven oh nine P.M. Um, first will be ambulance building repairs. Need to fix the roof. So we're waiting on estimates for that, correct?
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on getting three so I can compare them to see which way is the best for the warranty. But I think Joyce and I can go into general services and that group of line items. And I think what I'm looking at, Austin, right now, he should be able to pool that money together to pay.
Okay, we don't need any legislation?
No.
And the money is already in those lines is already?
Yeah, and we have them, we just have to wait and see and make sure.
Appropriate, yeah.
Yeah. So we really don't need nothing, I was just making you a.
So we really don't need nothing. I was just making you aware of what we're doing. Make sure there's no questions.
But you won't come back to us with, um, how much?
Yeah, I'll let you know. It's just we, we're, we're on a timeframe to get it done and I will let, let you know what happens.
Okay, thanks. The next is for housing study that came from economic development. In favor? Um, I have a question about that. Um, Galian said they would contribute five thousand. Are they required to put in ten dollars when the limit gets high?
He said that that's what they would pay out of their general fund, that they are required to make a ten. That's just what they would pay out of their general fund.
I don't know.
If you don't know the question or the answer, maybe you could find this out for me. Um, if they say that they're only putting five in and, and Gary says, well, I need ten from you, what happens? You know, I, I, I agree with what you said. I'm glad that this is happening. It's long overdue. I also think, you know, be the, the better people and do what we need to do, but I'm a little miffed at the fact that an equal partner with us in this is saying, well, we're not gonna do that, but we wanna reap all the benefits of the study. That doesn't sit well. So I'd like to know what, what, what the plan.
As far as I understand it as of now, I have not asked that question specifically.
Because what if we say the same thing? Not that we are, but what if we did?
No, how about?
No, they didn't come up with ten thousand out of here.
Right, you know, that's my point. Why is that our problem now to come up with their extra five?
It's not.
If we want the study to happen?
They're not in our study.
No, ours is a separate study.
They would be done, they would, they, they. Now, our costs, our costs would go up though.
Yeah, because you, when we discussed this before, you said because it was a joint study, our costs were down. So they are gonna increase our costs then?
For us individually, Galian would get no benefit from it because Galian would not be part of it. It would be Bussiris on its own. See, the forty thousand dollar price is because Galian and Bussiris would go together and do it together.
Right.
So if Galian does not come up with their ten thousand and they are not part of the study, then it's gonna be on Bussiris on its own and we're not, we're not gonna get the package price.
And we don't know what that price is.
Yes, we do. I just don't have that number in front of me because I've been basing everything off of Galian being part of this. Cause that's how it was explained to me is Galian will be on board with it, just they were gonna figure out how they're gonna come up with their ten thousand. I would like to know the answer to that before I felt comfortable voting to move forward with it because it's, it's an unknown at this point.
I think it should be tabled until Galian comes up with ten thousand if we're doing a, if we're doing a combined study with Galian and Bussiris. And I think that's the simple answer, table it and we bring it back to Gary and say, go back to Galian.
And finally, what his plan is, how long is he gonna give them to come up with ten before he's ready to move on?
Maybe you and Gary can talk to the mayor to have him go over and talk to Galian's mayor.
Well, I would write from town of Larry's mountain for five thousand.
But I mean, maybe.
Incentivize him?
Have Mayor Reacher go over and, you know. So.
Oh, sorry. In defense of Galian somewhat, they did just come out of fiscal emergency. It could be that they don't feel, you know, that their budget for this year was already set. I don't know what they're looking at for next year, but it could be that they're just trying to be prudent so that they don't go back into fiscal emergency. And it could be that they would have another source for that five thousand dollars. But I agree with tabling it till we know, you know, know more about it, but I, I would probably be a little spooked on making a commitment to something just coming out of fiscal emergency also, but I mean, they weren't for fourteen years.
In the contract that's here, the fees are payable one half in advance with a balance due upon completion of the report. So we would only owe five thousand dollars now and I would assume it's going to take them at least sixty days.
Six to eight weeks is what.
Six to eight weeks, okay. Uh, six to eight weeks to, to get it done. So that takes us into next year and that if we can get five thousand dollars somewhere this year, we give the auditor a chance to look through their seat where we can get five thousand dollars from and then put it in the budget for next year. The other five thousand dollars will be done.
I'm gonna go back to you again. We pay for the economic development of.
Fifty thousand?
Did Galian pay fifty thousand?
I would, I thought I heard they paid forty thousand.
I'm just curious, did they pay the same amount or less and we're picking up the.
Well, I don't know, the populations are different. They have, we're, we're sitting right at twelve thousand now and they're.
Sitting at ten? Two thousand difference, that's not.
It's two thousand.
Huh?
Yeah.
That'd be, that'd be a pretty decent difference. I mean, we can have this two thousand people difference in tax dollars if we had two thousand of people.
Yeah.
Depends on, you know.
Our, our, the age and the working class.
But alls we can do is speculate on what theirs is and I think speculation gets us nowhere.
Yeah, I was gonna also point out too, and I didn't get into it in the other committee, but I've, I've been reading through the company's description of the studies they've done. The city sizes of what they're listing are much more major sized cities and down, and they're identifying downtown housing potential and completely different types of markets. I mean, they do mention Middletown, Ohio, but I don't really, I don't, I don't know their exact population, but I think they're quite a bit larger than us as well. I don't, I don't know enough information about the company that's gonna be doing the study that we're committing a huge amount of money on budget for, for a study that to me, I'm not currently convinced that it's applicable to our, our size communities. So that's another reason right now for me to table it due to lack of complete information on who's performing the survey and whether it's really gonna be relevant to us when it's completed. We don't, I've, I've not seen a completed example of what one of these surveys looks like when they're done. You know, if they said, well, we've done this type of survey in Sidney, Ohio and Lima and Finley and, you know, some other comparable sized towns, I might be more convinced on that end and, you know, get a little better detail there. But I think it would also give us some more time to analyze whether or not this was really the best fit for us. Middletown has forty-eight thousand.
Okay, so from what I'm gathering, um, the majority is wanting to table it or still further.
Feel a little more. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Maybe instead of waiting until we get into the meeting to ask me all these questions, maybe we could reach out to Gary and get those answers right from him too. I mean, cause he's gonna have all those answers that I'm not gonna have. He's gonna be better prepared than I am. He's gonna be able to think off the fly with some of this stuff too. So maybe if you guys could reach out to him yourselves.
Moving on. What's the official salary?
Nothing we actually have to get into this evening, but we do need to get it taken care of establishing the salaries for the next four years for the mayor, the law director and the auditor and two years for the council president and the council members prior to the ninety days prior to the May primary. So you have here a couple of spreadsheets that show what, what everything is right now and then another spreadsheet that the council clerk Todd looked into, looking at other cities that are basically the same size as us and what they're paid is for very, excuse me, for various positions. So that's basically, I don't know that we need any discussion this evening. Everybody's needs to take time to look at this. But that is our timeframe. We have to have the entire two. I think it's February fifth or something like.
Four days.
Ninety days before one May, yeah.
Before you turn in your.
So. So keep this one handy, okay? Look through it and get your.
Moving on, gov deals agreement.
This is something that we, something every year that rather than having the annual auction that we used to have to have, we sign up with Gary, who went and talked about gov deals and he'll come out and tell you, tell you that if he's not locked in. Oh, he's not locked in.
No. We started in twenty eleven. Anything that's a surplus or someone that, something that an office doesn't need, we put it on gov deals. To this date, I have figured out we have sold over two hundred and eighty-four items and made over eighty-seven thousand dollars. And we can do that at any time, not have to set up just a auction date, you know, and have to pay someone to come do that and fix it up. So it's, it's gone really well. I think it's a great thing that we've done. Denny Tyner started it. So.
And we bought several good things out there at one of Jeff's favorite websites.
That's where we got our two late machines, saving us about, what Joyce, fifty thousand or seventy-five thousand dollars? No, the one slide was new.
You were bidding though.
Well, I was, I was nervous. I didn't want it cause I didn't know where we were gonna get the money. Then you go tear it down.
But it's nice because it really doesn't cost us anything because the buyer actually pays the fee and comes and picks it up. So we don't have to cost it.
And that money does go back into that fund that we sold.
So we just need legislation for January first, two thousand eighteen.
Each year we need to do this, yes.
Second.
First by Kevin, second by Andy. We all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bed tax agreement, the throw is over.
This was another annual. Based upon the bed tax that we collected, we do have a new, uh, new hotel in town and we're, we're collecting taxes from. Have you seen any, have you seen the increase?
Yes, I just got, for the third quarter, they were back, back in business.
Okay.
And I believe that was around six thousand dollars we received from them for that quarter. Holiday Inn Express has, you know, they're, they're usually gonna double that, but, but nights in is new business.
It's a new business and we give fifty percent of the bed tax collected and that is a three percent bed tax.
Yes.
That we have in place, the city's allowing to do it. Tourism here does a lot for the city. There's a lot of groups that they, they bring in and they, I mean, keep our name out there. The, with, they've got some really beautiful work that they do that gets distributed, some of it at the rest stops, I think on Turnpike and they put it all around town and they also put it out and, and I can't list all the places they put it.
I'm gonna reach out for our current director and see if I can get him to come in and just give us a little speech about what they're, what he's doing, what his plans are going forward as well.
Okay, that'd be a good idea for the next meeting.
So we just need, we're in agreement, we need to.
Request legislation.
For, um, two thousand nineteen.
So.
First by Kevin, second by Andy. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Fire department grant applications.
Fire department grant application.
Yes, um, it was a grant that they applied or have applied for, for their air packs. Ours are twenty years old and the average life is supposed to be ten fifteen according to the fire chief. So they just want permission to basically apply for this grant the way I understood. Joyce, do you?
Well, I believe they've received this grant.
Okay.
That has been approved, but they, they need to go out to bid to get, you know, to get bids for. Yeah, cause this actually says twenty eighteen bed packet.
On the cover sheet, okay.
And it's over fifty thousand dollars, so it needs to be bid. So I, they just need to get your blessing, your legislation to allow them to go to bid and enter into a contract to get this equipment.
It will specify the, did you start to say something?
He said so moved.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, so it will specify, go for bid and, uh, in, enter into a contract using the specified grant to pay for it. Okay, that's what it will say.
Second.
First by Kevin and second by Andy. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed. Appropriations.
At one appropriation, please, let's have this be the last appropriation I have to make this year. Getting to the end of the line here. Uh, this is in the general fund, program seven general government under the law director category, thirty-seven hundred dollars in personal services. This is for the victim advocate because of the cut in funding this year and this is to cover his health insurance. Now, he is in discussions with Columbus, with the Victims of Crime Act people. They said that he could apply and get additional money and have the insurance paid through Voca eighty-twenty. We would pay twenty percent of it, which is what we basically were for. So hopefully that will be in place by the first of the year for next year, but that doesn't help us right now. So we need to, I, I'll be able to reimburse when that actually comes in, but at this point we need to appropriate this thirty-seven hundred dollars and that's the only appropriation I have right now.
So do I have a motion to approve the appropriation for thirty-seven hundred dollars?
So moved. Second.
First by Andy and second by Andy. We all in favor?
Aye.
And then we have appropriation reductions. I decided I wasn't waiting till December to do this. First one is in swimming pools on two fifty-five. In the pool, materials and supplies, a reduction of nine thousand dollars and a reduction of five thousand dollars in capital outlay. This brings the appropriations in line with actual revenues. And that leaves us in the black even though we didn't transfer that money we cut out earlier. So just so you know. Then in the airport grant, we need to reduce contractual services by five thousand dollars and capital outlay by a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven eighty-seven, fifty. And that will bring appropriations in line with revenues. I may have to come to you later and ask for an advance on that. They just started a project yesterday, but it's a small one, just a crack ceiling. They do this to me all the time. So, but the big project won't happen until next April. Found that out yesterday too. That's. So April is, that's when we're going to be working on the runway? Yes. Okay, yes. Then I'm adjusting the two grants for the victim advocate, Fund two eighty-one, two thousand nineteen crime victims assistance grant, reducing personal services by two thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars and seventy-three cents and reducing materials and supplies by thirty-five hundred dollars to bring that in line with the actual amount of money we'll receive for this first quarter. Then in Fund two eighty-two, the twenty nineteen victims of crime act, we're reducing personal services by one thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and fourteen to bring us in line with the money that was actually granted to us. Then we come to sewage disposal, my favorite fund this year. Fund seven twenty, we're making reductions in sewage disposal administration, nineteen hundred dollars from contractual services. And the sewage disposal operations and maintenance were reducing capital outlay by seventy-nine thousand dollars. thousand dollars. And sewers and drains, we are reducing contractual services by sixty thousand dollars and capital outlay by one million four hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred dollars. That was our group one and group two sewer projects that are not going to occur until next year. So, that will bring us in line with revenues for the end of the year.
So, these items will then go back into the budget for next year?
Yes.
Any questions? So, do I have a motion to, um, make the variance appropriation reductions?
Second.
First by Dan, second by Kevin? All in favor?
Aye.
We may have one transfer and that's with the sewage disposal. We will be increasing contractual services in sewage disposal operations and maintenance. Contractual services, ten thousand dollars, this is to cover electric out of the wastewater plant for the rest of the year and that is, uh, coming from sewers and drains contractual services, uh, we'll be deducting ten thousand dollars from that appropriation.
Okay? I have a motion to...
I'll do that.
Transfer first by Dan, second by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I will recess at seven thirty-two. Do we have any public participation?
You have somebody, yeah?
I sat here for a week.
While I have you in the room, Jeff, is there a way that you could check, when Joyce was talking about, uh, disposal at the wastewater treatment plant, uh, in years past, when the colony landfill would pump their leachate from their wells, they would bring it to the Weststone Street area by the fairgrounds and dump it into our sewer and then the city of Ushottage would make money from that disposal cost. Is there a way you could check to see whether...
I think they've changed where they're taking it or how they're getting rid of it, but I'll verify that with, uh...
We are starting to get money from them again.
But there for a while, they weren't.
Yeah.
I, I don't know where they were, but I'll find out. I'll check into it.
I was gonna look. We have received ten thousand nine hundred and one dollars, uh, for leachate this year so far. So, but I know for a while we were not getting it at all, so I don't know, I don't know what happened, what changed, whatever.
I'll have to check with Eric, speak with him and see what, I'm sure. These, we talked about, but I can't remember names after, so I, I will check.
A reminder, Tuesday, one PM, special finance committee meeting, uh, we're going over the budget. So, uh, it starts at one o'clock in hearing council chambers. Special finance committee meeting.
One last thing, um, for bringing all your questions, next Thursday's committee meeting, the next committee meeting we have on Thursday, Mr. Frank House will be here to answer all of them. Thursday, we meet on Tuesday or tomorrow, Monday? Is it Monday?
Tuesday. Twenty-sixth.
Tuesday twenty-sixth, okay, yeah, that's right, it's Thanksgiving, I'm sorry, so yeah, he'll be at our next committee meeting.
Uh, Thanksgiving.
Just real quick, the, uh, island vacation that you guys are giving me the legislation request for, may not have that ready for the next council meeting, but maybe the one after because there's some easement issues, especially with the gas companies and stuff with the federal checks, so may take a little longer than that. Probably be the next, next council meeting.
I guess I just, are you, are you still in finance?
Yeah, well, we...
We're into public.
Okay, um, I just wanna tell you that when we talk about the pines, we are probably gonna have some more meetings coming up here with just lands and buildings for now, just to get this rolling because of ODNR is really pushing the issue to at least know that we're actively meeting and making a plan to move forward, whichever we decide to do, but we need to keep them updated as we go, so, uh, I think there might be some requests for some meetings, maybe at four o'clock or whatever would work for all of you or five or whatever, other than the night that we have a record scheduled committee meeting. So, I just wanna throw that out there that we might come to you and ask you for that. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I made a question.
My second.
Mark and first by Mark, second by Doug and Will and Jim at seven thirty-six PM.
Thank you all.